The legislature is now called to order. Brianna, can you lead us in prayer? Can you lead us in prayer? Brianna? In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, and who is not in temptation, in the name of the Father, and of the Son,
and of the Holy Spirit.
Okay. Will Kyle lead us in singing the Guam Heaven Tomorrow?
It's okay Kyle, just start off, just say "Fa'no'vi." Zamoru pu'itana'ota, kon'tay ma'tu'na'ni'vi'lu'ira. Para i'onra, para i'gloria, abipa i'isla sen'para. Para i'onra, para i'gloria, abipa i'isla sen'para. To'lu'ipu'ipas para hita, zanginilagi na'pendisyon. Kon'tay peligu' nafansafuhan, tuz'prote'i islan Guam. Kon'tay peligu' nafansafuhan, tuz'prote'i islan Guam.
Jaclyn, will you lead us in the National Anthem?
See, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at that twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the pors we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof to the night that our flag was still there. O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Row call.
Senator Anthony Barcenas. Senator Brianna Benito. Senator Jody Catahey.
Here.
I'm Speaker, I'm sorry. Senator Letitia Cruz. Senator Isabella Fagoda. Senator Jenna Maratita. Senator Katrina Orozco. Senator Jaclyn Solis.
Present.
Senator Arlene San Nicolas. Senator Christian Simoy. Senator Janiki Suba. Senator Carl Tanatongo. Vice Speaker Kyle Tass. Senator Robert Wang. Ms. Speaker, there is a call.
Thank you. Jaclyn Solis is... You are recognized? On communications and petitions?
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imaga, Lahua, and Guam. I move that they have been considered to have been read and be appended to today's Legislative Journal.
On that motion? Without objection? So ordered. Jaclyn? You are recognized? On item H?
Yeah, on item H. Sure did, item H. So what happened to item G? Item G. Recognized communication petition. Yeah.
Jaclyn, I recognize you on item I? Wait, I? She said I. Wait, this one?
Madam Speaker...
You said I? Aye.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees and move that they also have been considered to have been read and also been appended to the Legislative Journal.
On that motion? Without objection? So ordered. Jaclyn can have a motion to move to the... To the top second reading?
Motion to move to the top of the second reading, Madam Speaker?
On that motion? Without objection? So ordered. We are now at the top of the second reading? Vice Speaker Tass? Can you come up and assume the chair?
We are now, uh, we are, we are now at the top of the second me, uh, reading, and I'd like to recognize Speaker Jody Catahey. On Bill One.
Mister Speaker, I move... That move, that Bill One? Be placed in third reading. And I would like to speak on that motion.
Senator Catahey, uh, you are recognized.
I think it's a good bill because, um, recently we've been, uh, numbers of incre- uh, numbers of teens that are corrupted because of illegal, the use of illegal drugs and alcohol. They've increased throughout the years and it's, um, Guam is at the forefront of those and it's growing dr- drastically. Uh, we're trying to further educate the causes of illegal drug abuse and I believe that more education will result in less use. And therefore, I urge all my colleagues to support my bill. Thank you.
On Bill Number One, Senator Cruz, you are recognized. On Bill Number One, Senator Cruz, you are recognized.
Thank you Mister Chair. Um, I'd like to make a change to Bill Number One EC, the one that's being discussed. Um, line four of page two in section 4209, mandatory course on drug abuse. School system shall establish the mandatory drug course to begin no later that. It says that. So if we can cross that out and put than the first semester of school year 2007 to 2008.
No objection. No objection.
No, no objection, okay. Okay, if there's no objection. If you need to ask her to please repeat the change in the amendment. Please repeat, repeat.
Senator Cruz, could you repeat the amendment?
On line four of page two in section 4209, if we can change, it says to begin no later that. If we can cross that out and put than the first semester of school year. Cross out the word "that" and replace it.
On the amendment, if there is no objection?
No objection.
Amendment carries. On Bill Number One? If there are no other speakers? Speaker Catahey, you are recognized to make the closing. Okay? Okay? On, on the motion to place into the third reading? All in favor? Say aye. Okay?
There's no, okay, all those in...
All those opposed? Say no. No, no. The motion passes. On the third reading.
On Bill Number Two, Senator Simoy, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number Two EC be moved down to the third file, third reading file, and I would like to speak on that motion.
Senator Sim- Simoy, you may speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ta necessita zangin paratokubri ikutura dan ilinguahina hita ni manhobin takke tungu manfino chmorgigi mata dan eskolata. To translate what I just said, it is necessary for us to keep the language and the culture alive. And we the youth must know how to speak the language at home and at school. I've attended Guam Public Schools my whole life and I've taken Chamorau classes for many of those years. And as a graduating senior, I still can't speak or understand the language. I feel that it is important for us as the younger generation to be able to keep that language alive, not only for ourselves, but for our island's next generation and future generations. Just about the only people who can speak the language fluently these days is the older generation, the monompi. And this generation will not last forever. Once they're gone, the language might die with them and that would be a tragedy. If we don't take action now, that tragedy is inevitable. But it's not too late. We can do something today and that's why I've introduced number, Bill Number Two. What this bill will do is create a Chamorau immersion task force. And this task force made up of people from the Guam Public School System, the Department of Chamorau Affairs, and UOG will be tasked with creating a program in our public schools. This program will require that everyone in the schools, from the students and the teachers, all the way to the staff and the principal, speak the Chamorau language exclusively for at least a two-hour period a day. This is the only way to learn a language, to be surrounded by it. And while you might not be able to understand what is being said at first, after a while, you'll pick up some phrases and words and sentences. Many teachers won't be able to speak the language at first and that's why they will be paired up with Chamorau teachers and staff members of the school who can speak Chamorau. And best of all, the program will encourage people from the community, especially the monompi, to come into the schools and teach skills such as cooking and crafts and life skills, all while speaking Chamorau. This way, the students and teachers will learn the language from people in the community. Finally, this program will create within the Dr. Yamashita Education Corps a program to teach our upcoming teachers how to speak Chamorau well enough for this immersion period and certify them. So that when they begin teaching, they will have a high level of pay because of this certification. With this immersion program, it would be difficult for both teachers and students at first because they don't speak the language. But after a month or two, or, or a year, they'll begin to be able to speak common phrases such as get out your textbooks, or can I use the bathroom? And their fluency will only grow every day. And that's the goal of this program, to produce fluent students and teachers so they can go on to teach the next generation and keep this island's native language alive for years to come. Thank you.
Sijos Masi. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this motion? Senator San Nicolas, you're recognized?
I would like to support Senator Simoy's bill on my behalf. My reason for this is I think it's very good, um, to suppo- um, to support our culture and our dialect and that I think it's, um, our culture is dying out and it's very important to preserve it. And therefore, I'd like to co-sponsor your bill.
On the motion to for a change in sponsorship? All those in favor? Say aye. All those opposed? Say nay. Ayes have it, uh, the motion passes. On the main motion? Are there any further speakers? Senator Cruz, you're recognized?
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I would like to say that I support this bill 'cause I, um, because I believe that the Chamorau language is very important in this island because without the Chamorau, without the Chamorau language, we wouldn't be able to call ourselves Chamoraus. And, um, I would all, I would just like to make a change. For section two, it says, members to be appointed by the Director of Education. Can we strike out "education" to make a director of the Guam Public School System?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, ca- can I correct myself? Um, superintendent? Superintendent of the, of the Guam Public School System?
On Ms. Cruz's motion? Is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. On the main motion? Any further discussion? Is there any discuss, further discussion on the motion? None? Okay. On the main motion? Is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. We are now on Bill Three, and Senator Maratita, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill Number Three be placed in third reading and I would like to briefly speak my bill. Section One, Creation of Student Food Service Quality Committee. Section Two, Meetings of SFSQ Committee. And Section Three, Duties of the SFSQ Committee. I would like my colleagues to vote on my bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the main motion, is there any further discussion? Senator Orozco? You're recognized?
Madam Speaker, I support Bill Number Three introduced by Senator Jenna Maratita, which acts to create a committee of public high school and middle school students who will provide input to the Guam Public School System concerning the meals provided because they are the ones directly affected by this. They are the ones who eat the food and they should have some say in what they consume. I hope my colleagues agree and will support Bill Number Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Senator Cruz, you're recognized?
Thank you. Um, I understand that this bill is so that students can provide their input in the meals provided to students at the GPSS facilities. And I understand the intent of this bill and I support it because students should be allowed to put their input. But I would just like to say that students should be able to go to their administration anyway without having the committee and bring up their concerns. And they, we also have student government or the students, student council within the schools. We can bring, the students can bring up their concerns during that time. So a committee, unless the committee is part of the student council, I don't think a committee itself is really needed. But I understand because it is important that students do bring up their concerns.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the main motion? There being none, is there any objection on the motion? Without objection, the motion carries. We are now on Bill Four. Senator San Nicolas, you are recognized?
Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number Four be placed in the third reading filed for the purpose of discussion.
Proceed.
Bill Number Four is an act to appropriate $2 million to the medically indigent program for the purpose of providing prenatal care for women on Guam. It, I find that there are many women on Guam, especially women under the age of 18 years of age, who do not have affordable prenatal care. And I believe that preno- prenatal care is important to all women for the, the the purpose of the baby, the child, and their health. And in section three, it says that the Department of Public Health and Social Services shall provide free parental, prenatal care to women who do not have health insurance coverage or for any women with a, a health insurance policy plan that does not cover prenatal care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Senator Orozco? You are recognized.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. I support Bill Number Four and offer an amendment as a dedicated funding source for the program. My amendment is to apply, uh, is to apply on section two and read, $2 million is hereby appropriated from the Healthy Futures Fund to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, MIP, for purposes of prenatal care for all women in Guam. I hope my colleagues agree and support this amendment as it will prove beneficial to the women who qualify. Madam Speaker, I have passed out the amendments. So all my colleagues should have a copy. Thank you.
I don't have a copy. I don't have a copy.
One will be provided to you.
Oh, okay. No discussion is possible unless I have a copy.
Madam Speaker? Um, we move to recess until the motion is passed out?
One minute, um, recess? Recognized on your amendment?
Madam Speaker, the amendment has been provided to all my colleagues and I ask that they truly support this amendment and I urge, urge my colleagues to vote for the main bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the amendment? Is there any objection? Without any objections, the motion carries. On the main motion is amended. Is there any further discussion? I recognize. Senator McCollson, you are recognized.
For this bill, Bill Number Four, um, it says that we're gonna get $2 million for the, for the woman in the hospital, right? Yeah? Anyways, where are they gonna get the money and the general funds for this? I'm just gonna ask the person who passed the bill. Can I ask the author of the bill to yield the question?
Does the Senator yield, yield to the question? Senator Orozco?
The bill has now been amended, and it's now gonna be coming out of the Healthy Future, Futures Fund. And that's from the taxes on the tobacco and alcohol.
Senator McCollson, does that answer your question? Yes, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? There being none, is there any objection in the motion? There being none, the motion carries. We are now on Bill Five. Senator Wang, you are recognized.
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Bill Number Five be placed in the third reading, and I would like to speak brief, briefly on my bill.
Proceed.
Bill Number Five, if passed and signed into law, would ensure that all employees are treated fairly, have choice in the workplace, and essentially provide that unions have the ability to recover for whatever it costs to negotiate benefits. In other words, if a union is successful in negotiating for a benefit, federal law provides that everyone in that category receive the benefit. However, because of Guam's right to work law, these unions are unable to recover the cost and negotiate for the benefit. The federal government ensures that workers who are either union members or non-members are protected equally and fairly in their workplace. The right for a worker to become a union member, as well, the right for a worker to decline, to join a union, are guaranteed by federal law. My bill would make sure that unions which represent employees and management which represents the employer have a level playing field, and that neither the employer nor the employees have an advantage. I encourage all of my fellow senators to support Bill Number Five. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on Bill Five? There being none, is there any objection to the motion? There being no objection, the motion carries. We are now on Bill Number Six. Senator Solis, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number Six be placed in the third reading file for discussion.
On that motion? Do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do, just briefly.
Okay, proceed.
It is my hope that this bill will help to reassure the public that any service, that any service fee increase is justifiable. For example, the driver's license fee is currently $5, although the cost of issuing a driver's license fee is $17. To recover the cost of issuing a license fee, a proposed increase to raise a license fee to $25 can be justified. Um, this proposed bill required a detailed breakdown of, um, the cost to the, for the public services for which fees would be increased. Knowing where the money goes will assure the public that it is not being wasted. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, is there any objection to the motion? There being none, the motion carries. We are now on Bill Number Seven. Senator Benito, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to place a motion on Bill Number Seven, an act to place a moratorium on all fee increases contained within Bill Number Seven Seventy-Four, pending approval by a majority vote by the people of Guam, in the third reading file, and to speak on the motion.
You are recognized.
The legislature finds that any and all fee increases contained within Bill Number Seventy-Four place an undue burden on all citizens of Guam. Though most fee increases target specific users of such services, it is likely to assume that these additional business costs will be passed down to consumers. Therefore, all residents will likely be impacted in one way or another through the fee proposals contained in the Fiscal Year 2007 Budget Reconciliation Act. Additionally, no preemptive steps have been taken to reduce the costs incurred by the government of Guam. Accordingly, the general public and the business community is forced to absorb these fee increases, while the government of Guam continues its uncontrolled spending. It is the legislature's intent to allow all legally eligible voters to determine if these fee increases are just by placing a referendum measure before the people of Guam and voting for the approval or disapproval, disapproval of such increases.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion? There being none, is there any objection on the motion? Without objection, the motion carries. We are now on Bill Number Nine. Senator Kyle Tass, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker? Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number Nine be moved to the third reading file for a purpose of discussion. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number Nine be moved to the third reading file for a purpose of discussion. For the third reading.
Okay, on the motion?
Uh, I wish to speak on it. This bill will appropriate the sum of $95,000 to the Mayor's Council of Guam for organized youth sports. I believe this will deter the impact of negative influences on youth by giving them an alternative way to use their time. I ask that the body, I ask the body to support Bill Number Nine as a deterrent and alternative to negative influences that our youth today face. Sports instill discipline and confidence in youth and will pro, provide them with a sense of team integrity. As will, as, uh, as well as giving them the skills required to interact positively and efficiently with others in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, is there any objection on the motion? Senator Wang, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, Speaker. I just, I, I just want to, um, how, how would you say, um, show my favor for, or I support this bill, which is, you know, to appropriate $95,000 to the Mayor's Council of Guam for organized youth sports. Lot of talent on Guam, especially with sports. And I feel as though that the $95, if this, this does get passed, you know, will actually really be beneficial to us, um, with the coming sports throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you. On the main motion? Is there any objection? Without obje, oh. Senator Sniklis, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I would say I have to disagree, and, um, my reason for this is that I think the appropriated money can be used for other issues. Instead of, um, appropriating the money to youth sports, they can appropriate it to a youth center where the kids can spend time there and stray away from violence and criminal, criminal activities.
Thank you. Any objection in the main motion? Was that an objection to the motion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Can you raise it higher? The motion fails. We still have one more bill. Okay, we are now on Bill Number Eight. Senator Benito, you are recognized.
Um, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number Eight, an act to dedicate the Paseo Stadium in honor of Governor Paul M. Calvo in recognition of his valuable contributions to the people of Guam. In the, in the third reading file, and... Thank you.
On that motion, do you wish to discuss?
No.
Is there any discussion on the motion? There being none, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. I now recognize Senator Orozco.
Madam Speaker, thank you. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that Bill Number Ten be included in the second reading file and move to the third reading for brief discussion.
Is there any objection to Senator Orozco's motion? Without objection, the, the bill is in third reading.
Thank you. Bill Number Ten is an act to direct the Department of Public Works to determine the cost of providing...
The bill was, the motion was to place Bill in third reading?
But Madam Speaker, I ask to speak briefly on the bill.
Would you like to make a motion to reconsider the action in legis, legislature?
Yes.
On that motion? Is there any objection?
No objection.
Motion carries.
I move that Bill Number Ten be put into second reading.
On that motion? Is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. We are now in second reading. On Bill Number Ten, Senator Orozco, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill Number Ten is an act to direct the Department of Public Works to determine the cost of providing separate trash containers for recyclable trash to each Guam household and collection of the separated trash to promote the recycling process in Guam. Be it enacted by the people of Guam. Section One, Public Works to Determine Costs to Separate Trash. The Department of Public Works shall determine the costs of providing trash containers to each Guam household that would provide for the separation of trash. One container each for paper, beverage containers, including glass, plastic, and aluminum, and other waste. DPW shall also devise a schedule and determine the cost of picking up the containers on a regularly scheduled basis. Upon completion of the study, DPW shall report the cost to the legislature. Why recycle? Why not? Compared to producing paper from virgin wood fiber, each ton of recycled paper saves seventeen trees, saves three cubic yards of landfill space, generates sixty pounds less air pollution, saves six hundred and eighty-two gallons of oil, requires seven thousand gallons less water, and saves four thousand one hundred and two kilowatt hours of energy. Also, using discarded aluminum cans to make a product takes only four percent as much as energy as making the same product from ore. I ask that my colleagues support this bill.
On the motion to place in third reading? Is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. We are now in third reading. Because of time constraints, would someone like to make a motion to vote on all bills in third reading? In a single motion? By acclamation, notwithstanding the House rules? Would someone like to make that motion? So on that motion? Is there any objection? Without objection? So ordered. Clerk? Can you read all the titles and numbers of, of bills in third reading?
Bill Number One EC has amended on the floor, introduced by J. Catahey C. Task C. Simoy, an act to appropriate the sum of $50,000 to the Guam Public School System for the planning of an education program on the use of illegal drugs and reenacting section four-two-zero-nine of chapter four, title fourteen of the Guam Code annotated. Bill Number Two, introduced by C. E. Simoy, an act to create the Chamor Immersion Task Force to preserve the Chamor language by implementing a Chamor language immersion period within the Guam Public School System. Bill Number Three, introduced by Jenna Meritita, Katharina Orozco, R. Wang, and others, an act to create a committee of public high school and middle school students to provide input to the Guam Public School System concerning the meals provided to students at GPSS facilities. Bill Number Four is amended, introduced by A. Sniklis, R. Wang, A. Anthony, and others, an act to appropriate $2 million to the Medically Indigent Program for the purposes of providing prenatal care for women on Guam. Bill Number Five, introduced by R. Wang, K. Orozco, and A. Barcenas, an act to repeal and reenact chapter four, division one, and to repeal and reenact section five-two-zero-one-G of chapter five, division one, both of title twenty-two of the Guam Code annotated. Annotated, relative to ensuring that all employees are treated fairly, have choice in the workplace, and do not pay for benefits they do not receive. Bill Number Six, by Jay Solis, an act to require a clear explanation of methodology and calculations used to justify and supply requests for new user fees and user fee increases to be known as the Public Service Fee Transparency Act of 2007. Bill Number Seven, introduced by B. C. Benito, an act to place a moratorium on all fee increase contained within Bill Number Seventy-Four pending approval by a majority vote by the people of Guam. Bill Eight, an act to dedicate the Paseo Stadium in honor of Governor Paul M. Calvo in recognition of his valuable contributions to the people of Guam. Bill Number Ten, introduced by K. Orozco, A. Barcenas, an act to direct the Department of Public Works to determine the cost of providing separate trash containers for recyclable trash to each Guam household, and collection of the separated trash to promote the recycling process in Guam.
On the motion to pass all bills in third reading? Is there any objection? Without objection, motion carries. Thirty-second recess. We are now ready to entertain a motion for, to adjourn? She made a motion to adjourn on that motion? On that motion? Without objection? Uh, legislation is in adjournment.